Thank you all so much for being here today to talk to us a little bit about your campaign for Portland City Council. I think we'd like to hear a little bit from all of you about why you've decided to run or run for reelection? And why voters should be looking to mark their ballots for you? Why don't we start off with Renee Gonzalez?
Well, thanks so much for having me today. Again, my name is Renee Gonzalez. I'm a multicultural, small business owner, raising a family of three children here in the city. My children, while multicultural, will be the sixth generation of my family to live in the city of Portland. I, by way of background, I own a law firm and a technology company that serves clients Northwest, Midwest, have a history of engagement civically, Portland Children's Museum, Library Foundation, president of the largest youth soccer club in the state. More recently during the pandemic, I led a statewide effort to reopen schools, really grassroots 40,000 member strong statewide data driven to get the children back in school, playing sports and the arts. And I'm running because I'm deeply concerned about livability in the city and the framing of issues and the political weakness coming from our elected officials and confronting the dual challenges of crime and homelessness. We built a grassroots movement out of K through 12 parents, families of all lifestyles and seniors. And we now have raised over 300,000 in the small donor program without the help of PACs, just small donors in the city of Portland speaking up with a focus on crime and homelessness. I'll get into just some real specifics on what I'd like to focus on and then turn it over to my fellow colleagues here. With respect to the unsheltered, the segment of the population that we most see from our homeless population on our streets, I think we failed to properly define the issue. Specifically, we homogenize a highly segmented population. And it's made up of a high degree when you look at the data, 80% suffering from disabilities. Number one on the list, addiction, number two on the list, mental illness, substantial number suffering from both. But we rarely hear that from policymakers. They want to talk about affordability. They want to talk about housing first. And I believe on our streets, we're failing to address the underlying needs. There are some gaps in our social services beyond sort of framing and philosophical. We lack an acute detox center on the streets of Portland. This means that when those who are really struggling with a high level of toxicity from meth or opiates need treatment, need to be addressed, we have no good place to take them. And so it's a material gap in our current services there. It's either ER or jail, neither of which are well equipped to treat that. There are other elements that I'd love to get into on the unsheltered. I think we need to prioritize shelter over, even if that means the exclusion of some long-term investment in affordable housing. I think we need to make that conscious choice that allows us to improve the sleeping arrangements for our unsheltered. It also allows us to enforce existing law in the city of Portland, which since 1981 has prohibited unsanctioned camping. As you're all probably aware, it was a Ninth Circuit law, Oregon law. We are subject to limitations in our ability to enforce that until we offer alternative shelter. And so we need to prioritize shelter for both humanitarian and legal reasons. There are other aspects on shelter I'd love to get into.
We will definitely go into homeless. Okay, great. Thank you. Joanne, can you tell us a little bit about why you are running for reelection?
Yes, I will. And thank you again for the invitation. I'm running for reelection because I have started some transformative projects, systems at the city of Portland that I want to make sure are fully implemented, including but not limited to Portland Street Response. I was able to get it expanded to 20 hours a day, seven days a week. But we need it available 24 hours a day, seven days a week for all Portlanders. I also want to make sure that the police, the new police oversight board is fully implemented, that we hire a civilian training dean so that we can create true community partnerships as we train the next generation of police officers. In addition, this summer, starting a new youth, work, summer works program that will allow youth to rotate through our first responder bureaus. Because honestly, our first responder bureaus all are critically short of staff. And we're going to have to grow the next generation of first responders. And so to give them access and opportunity to not even have to pick a field yet, but to expose them to that opportunity, I think is how we're going to build our public safety systems for the future. And so, you know, I have a lot of work that I've started. I've done incredible things in three years and three months, and I want to finish those before I am done.
Great. Thank you very much. And Vadim Mazursky, can you tell us a little bit about why you're running?
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Vadim Mazursky. I'm running for Portland City Council on a plan for bold vision, accountability, inclusiveness. And I believe very importantly right now, pragmatic rather than dogmatic solutions to the problems facing Portland. My family and I are refugees from the Ukraine and the former Soviet Union. We came here with very little, seeking the American dream. I'm a product of public schools, public university, public law schools. And when I became an attorney in the private sector and then later on working in the federal government in various positions, including now as an administrative law judge, that was the culmination of that American dream for my family. That American dream unfortunately is failing too many Portlanders. And it's not the fault of Portlanders, it's our dysfunctional government. And that dysfunction has caused a lot of the crises that we're seeing. Certainly, you know, we have a crisis in our humanitarian, humanitarian crisis in our homeless community. We have a crisis in crime and particularly homicides. We have a housing crisis that's been going on for seven years now, in fact, extended for three years because I guess city council didn't want to have it extended yearly from now on. And we have a divisive form of government that needs to be improved. And in fact, our government should be transformed from the current commission form of government to something that's more effective and better serves the Portland people. You know, Portlanders want fairly straightforward things, the trash we picked up, graffiti to be cleaned. They want good schools for their kids, safe neighborhoods so they can walk around without fear of being harmed. They want to be able to call 911 and get a quick response. In return, they pay their taxes, they do their civic duties, they obey the laws. The people of Portland are doing their part and our city government is not. So I'm running in a platform of pragmatism, of practical solutions. And I'm running in the platform of experience as well. Policies matter. And what I see a lot right now is a failure in policies in Portland. For instance, with homelessness, we have different policies in the city, different policies in the county, different policies at the metro. Here together Coalition has a certain set of policies as well. People are just not working well together and there's not a plan, there's not goals, there's not metrics that fit together. So we know what's succeeding and what's not. The money is out there, but the policies to make us successful are not. We defunded the police and then we refunded the police. We took away the gun violence reduction team, put in 18 months later, a new focused intervention team that has oversight, but still kind of does the same thing. These policies waiver back and forth, and I have that experience in federal government providing policies and also working on various committee organizations in Portland and commissions on developing those policies. And then experience matters. I've managed large bureaus for the federal government. I've managed the office here in Portland with benefit expenditures over $300 million. An office in Houston, Texas, I've worked at the highest ranks in the federal government, developing policies nationwide. And certainly I've worked with things like the Public Safety Action Coalition where I was a president and now board member because I'm running for office, working with neighborhood associations, working with people that live in central Portland, businesses, some business associations to get things done. And so I think I'm the candidate right now to be able to step in. It's not a job you want to learn as you go along, but it's a job that will bring people together. I'm working, running for office on a platform of unity, of bringing people together. There's a lot of people out there with their own plans, they're all working together in separate silos. We need to bring them together and make sure that our city has a plan that people can buy into and support and work together on.
Great. Thank you very much. I would like to start off with homelessness. And Joanne, maybe you could go first on this question. Tell me, four years from now, what will the streets of Portland look like?
If we land bank land that the city currently owns right now, if we stop selling public land to private interests and then begging for a public benefit, we will be able to make sure that working people will be able to remain in the city of Portland. With the median family income at $96,900, many of the people on our streets are still working. They're working one in two jobs. They just cannot afford first-class security deposit, pet deposit and pet rent to live in the city of Portland. Since the beginning of COVID, under the last federal administration, $4 billion have been pumped into development downtown in the inner southeast. None of those properties are affordable for current small business owners or for current residents who need to rent apartments. If we don't address the, the income inequality, no one who works in our hotels and our restaurants and our music venues or sports arenas, none of our creatives class, the people who made Portland, Portland and desirable to live will ever be able to live within the city core again. We're on the verge of becoming a city where rich people come to play and poor people are vested to service that. And if we don't do something big soon, we missed the opportunity to buy Concordia. I was pushing heavily for us to buy Concordia. We missed that opportunity. The city continues to not prioritize owning things. I actually put an amendment in last year to require 15 million of the federal dollars actually go to buy hotels. I told the joint office at the beginning of COVID, if at the end we didn't own property, we would have failed miserably. And here we are coming to the end. And other than the $15 million that I required the city council to set aside, I don't know, we cannot point to how we've actually invested those federal dollars from COVID relief into long-term solutions.
So let me make sure I understand. I mean, you believe that the solution is purely a public one? That, that it's going to take public dollars to set aside land to provide housing that, that the city owns?
Let me just say that we won't get any more land in the city of Portland. And if the city of Portland continues to allow prosper Portland to sell public land to private entities and then beg for a public benefit, we will continue to price Portlanders out of the city. So yes, I don't think we should be selling public, because again, we have an urban growth boundary. We're not going to get any more land. So we have to use the land we have today smarter. And I don't see a benefit of us selling it to a private interest and then begging for a public benefit.
And, and, but, but you do see the city as the one that's going to be building the tens of thousands of units that are okay.
Absolutely not. The city has a role. And a city's role is to again, make sure that land for housing people can afford to live in is available to build on. And the only land we have is land that is currently in public ownership. And we need to do this in partnership with Metro, the school district, TriMet. And I've been having those conversations because again, we have an urban growth boundary. So if we really want working people to always be able to live in a city of Portland, we have to think radically different as we're doing these major transportation projects like 82nd Avenue. If we're not making sure that we're building housing that workers can afford to live in, we will miss the opportunity to do that. We get one chance to do it. And I am in the midst of making sure that we do it in a way that really benefits both the residents and the businesses that are there today, not the ones that are going to come in after all the development has taken place.
And in terms of, actually, you know what, let me move on and then we'll, there's, there's a lot of questions on this topic. So let's see, and Vadim, if you can answer the question, I guess, what would, what will, what will homelessness look like four years from now in Portland?
If we can actually get around a plan that with the metrics and goals, homelessness will be greatly decreased four years from now. The money is out there. I know the money is out there. I've tracked it. And there's more than enough for us to make the solutions that are necessary with the additional funding from the new homeless services tax, a little less than $250 million a year, but that's, that was the goal. With federal money coming in at least for the next few years. And then without taxes, we already have measure 110. What we need to do is ensure that people not only have access to services, but that they avail themselves of those services. And so I think we need a public-private partnership. I've certainly spoken with a lot of individuals over the last few months. And there's neighborhood associations that are out there, working with their homeless communities and helping. They want a voice and how to help, but they're saying that they're not being heard and they're not being, they don't have a seat at the table. Even developers I've talked to, they said they know properties that they can allocate for temporary shelters. But again, the city-county partnership is not listening to, to them either. And from the city, we need to make sure that the services are there, that they're provided, that they coordinate with the 240 plus nonprofit and charities organizations in the metro area, working in this field. We have the solutions out there, Bybee Lakes, $24 a night, 80% success rate in helping people get past drug addiction and get on their feet and working. I was there when it started up and I was there only a few weeks ago. People are having, were having lunch out there, kids were playing basketball in the courtyard, they have a garden. That's a successful entity right now, was just recently funded by a million dollars. But that's for the first time. Let's fund things that work. And let's also make sure that everybody is held accountable and working together. If you go to Joan of the Homeless website, you can't tell where the money is going and what the metrics are and what the success looks like. Certainly there's entities out there having success. Certainly there's entities out there that are failing. We need to make sure that we incentivize what's working and not what's not working and make it public. Accountability is very much lacking in our city government and, you know, PSF and some of those other areas are an indication. But certainly in this as well. And so when you talk to individuals out there, they're all rolling up their sleeves, whether in SOLV or neighborhood associations or individually or in businesses, everybody wants to join in. The question I get a lot is, what is the plan? And I have a hard time answering that because I'm sitting in a lot of these committees and I hear different plans. And so the, the main aspect is make it transparent, make a plan. Say within the first year, I fully believe we can decrease homelessness in Portland by 30%. And then let's live up to that plan instead of saying we're going to give a lot of money away and hope and hope that it succeeds somehow. There's too many people dying in our streets and we can do better. We can find places for them to shelter, we can find places for them to sleep, and we can provide the services at those places day in and day out, rather than expecting services to come to 2,000 people in 2,000 street corners around Portland.
Thank you. Renee, how about you? What, what is your vision for what Portland will look like four years from now in terms of homelessness?
In terms of vision on the creation of market rate and below-market units, which are so crucial to balance demand with supply, right? We need to completely revisit our approach to permitting. To the development process is perceived to be anti-developer, made up of largely advocates that are in the bureaucracy that make it so difficult to get predictability and cost under control as you're navigating Portland city permit. You have eight different bureaus that will touch a multifamily development. Systems aren't integrated. And so in the status quo, so four years from now, we need to streamline as much of that as we can. But more fundamentally, we need to change the mindset with respect to multifamily development. We need to track how many permits are being pulled every year for multifamily. We're at a really low number right now relative to three to four years ago. And we need to get those permits up to pre-pandemic, pre-inclusionary zoning levels to make a dent in the affordability on our streets. Other pieces there, we have been downright adverse to small landlords in recent years. So many of our tenant protections, while well-intentioned, have driven small landlords out of the business. They are perceived as punitive and it's decreasing our stock of single-family housing available for rent in the city of Portland. We need to reverse that as we, over the next four years, to make it more hospitable for small landlords to operate in the city. And with respect to inclusionary zoning, well, again, well-intentioned ideas for larger developments that you mandate below-market units. But all of the data, you're looking at the permits being pulled right now. It is driving development dollars and capital to other cities that are more hospitable from an investment perspective. And that means we need to remix the combination of, you know, carrot and sticks with respect to developers until those permits accelerate. The other piece that we, is absolutely a factor here where we're talking about affordability four years from now and your ability to attract capital. Capital floats across the country. Investors will go where it's predictable, where they think they can get returns. And one of the biggest issues we're struggling with right now is that national developers don't want to develop in Portland right now. And we can, we can demonize developers left and right. We can demonize national, international money, but that is the key to financing so many projects. They don't want to invest here. Part of it's in the issues I just covered in terms of it being unpredictable. The other though is our reputation for crime and for vandalism and how difficult it is to ensure in the city of Portland. So we've got to confront both the development process, our mindset towards developers, and also create a more hospitable place to invest. In terms of addiction services, we need a material rethink on measure 110. It's been horribly implemented. It was poorly considered without really involving the caregivers, the primary nonprofits that provide in that space. And we need to prioritize addiction services and getting those dollars out in the short term. But by four years from now, we need to rethink the mix of compassion and demand for personal responsibility in our, in our addict community because right now it's out of whack. It's too, it's, we're only about compassion, not about personal responsibility. And it's creating enablement on the streets of Portland. So I believe we need to materially reset that in terms of the expectations about, around anyone receiving social services in the city of Portland.
Great. Thank you. You raised something that I want to just ask the other two as well, just a pretty quick question. Joanne, would you, so Renee made reference to the loss of single-family homes from the rental market. And in fact, there was an Eco Northwest report recently that found that about 4,000 single-family homes have been taken off the rental market since 2015. Is there a, would, would you be willing to or would you support either suspending, revoking or revising the rent relocation requirement? Or relaxed screening or any, or along those lines?
I think any public policy is worth reviewing over and over and over again. No public policy is set in stone. But what I have seen is that with the residential infill property, we're taking down one single-family home and putting up four or more homes at a cost of $400,000 each. And so the loss of naturally affordable housing is being replaced by very expensive single-family housing units that are allowed because of rent. As I knock on doors in neighborhoods, it is a stark contrast between the new and the old. You can tell who's been in the neighborhood for generations based on what their house looks like outside, even before you knock on the door and have the conversation. So what we have is a lot of housing is being built. A lot of single-family homes are being built in, within the Portland metro area. They're just not affordable for the workers and the people here. Now, we need a lot of different options. I don't have a one-size-fits-all solution to our housing crisis. We should be doing more home shares. We should be, I look, I look at the rental market almost every day and people are renting rooms for $1,400 in their homes. And so the, again, the cost of getting into housing is the most expensive thing for working people today in the city of Portland. There, there's not a magic solution is what I will say, but yes, I'm always open to looking at policies, getting an independent evaluation and determining whether they're working as intended. And if they're not, let's tweak them.
And your view is that if, if you take down one house and you put up four that are expensive, that that's not helping the housing crisis at all?
What I'm saying is just exacerbating a housing market that is out of reach for people who work in school cafeterias, who clean hotel rooms, who work in our downtown restaurants and our sports arenas. We're creating a city that is, that, that poor people have to travel further to get to a job that doesn't pay them enough money to be able to live in the city of Portland. That, that's where we are at the moment. And so, and again, we need housing at a multitude of income levels. Your income should not determine your zip code. And we are about to be a city where that's exactly what's going to happen.
And one other question, inclusionary zoning, would you, is it the same thing that any, any policy should be up for review at some point? But do you have a firm view on inclusionary zoning at this point?
Well, I have to tell you, I have not been impressed with the outcomes of inclusionary zoning. I know the vision around inclusionary zoning was that anytime a multifamily building went up, we should have a couple of units set aside for, for people at 80% or below median family income. So today, what that means is you have to make 70,000 or more in order to qualify for a quote-unquote affordable unit in one of these buildings. I find that outrageous. And, and I also have noticed that people will build a building for singles and add a couple of three-bedroom units. What is the lived experience for families with children in a building built for singles? That is also allowed under inclusionary zoning. So I'm looking, I'm waiting for the study. I've demanded a study to find out whether or not we are actually getting what, what we've asked for, right? Because what I see coming from the council, it just makes me, it just frustrates me because it would take us 1,500 years at this rate to have housing people could afford to live in if inclusionary zoning was the only tool we had.
Great. Thank you. And just early warning, I see that we have about 35 minutes left. So I'm going to be a little bit more aggressive about, I'm, I'm sorry, but cutting you off. Vadim, with that in mind, in terms of would you be open to or would you support repealing or changing rent relocation and other tenant protections along those lines? And what is your stance on the inclusionary zoning?
Yeah, yes, we have to reevaluate that. The mayor, a few years ago, put in a budget $100,000 to take a look at some of the disincentives or incentives in the bigger developments. We need to do that for the smaller ones as well, because if they go away, that raises the price of living for everybody. It becomes a, you've been trying to lower the cost, it actually raises the cost. So you talk about the Econ Northwest study. It's backed up by the people I've been speaking with over the last few months. It backs up with the individuals that own duplexes and triplexes. They're saying it's too hard to make a profit doing that and too difficult to manage and they're pulling out. It also backs it up with an individual I spoke with just very recently, who has an investment business, helping other people that are retiring, who used to invest in Portland, buy these duplexes, triplexes for a source of income in retirement. She said they're no longer advising people to buy those in Portland because of the high barriers to actually being able to get tenants in and out of the buildings and making sure that it turns a profit for them, that they're investing in Beaverton, they're investing in the suburbs. But she's saying she's not advising anybody. She's pulled her own money out of Portland as well. That speaks to me about a disincentive that we need to address. Those small housing units are the cheaper ones usually, so we need to make sure we preserve them. With inclusionary zoning, I do believe that there's, that, that could work for us here in Portland. We need to involve the neighborhood associations and make sure that when there's concerns about historic areas in Portland, that we address those concerns. But we do need to find ways to have more housing in the small footprint that we have here. I mean, my thought is to have more taller housing, more dense housing around transportation hubs. So you keep Portland green so people do not have to drive everywhere. It makes it less expensive for people to live in those houses if they don't need cars, if they don't have to pay for gas. And, and having more dense areas around the Mac stops and TriMet and those sort of things. But inclusionary zoning is a step in the right direction. We just need to make sure once again that it addresses all the issues and there's no disincentives.
Okay, thank you. And Renee, you brought up the issue. And was there anything more you wanted to say regarding, it sounds like you're, you believe that it needs to be reviewed? These tenant protections potentially rolled back as well as inclusionary zoning. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Both need to be on the table. And the metrics we have to use are what is the stock of affordable rentals in the city? In terms of both, what, what is that market, what's below market? Just what, what units are available in the city, track that over time, pay very close attention to it, tinker with our policy with those metrics in mind. And then we got to track permits and, you know, the, the private sector is doing it for us often. But it is a great predictor of our pipeline of units X number of years from now. And we got to be all over it. One last piece, we've got to work with Metro to continue to evaluate their urban growth boundary. We were all promised two generations ago that the urban growth boundary would grow commensurate with population. That has not occurred, not anywhere close. And it has put a, a market pressure on affordability in the city of Portland. Again, city can't solve that by themselves. They have to work with Metro on that. But it's, it is a factor here in looking at affordability.
Great. Thank you. And Renee, actually, if you wouldn't mind, wouldn't mind going first on this question. And that's And that's, the mayor has, Mayor Wheeler in recent weeks has taken more executive action with regard to dealing with homelessness. He has banned camping along highways and arterials. I'm wondering, are there other places that you think that unsanctioned camping should be? Where that should be enforced, the ban on unsanctioned camping should be enforced?
I think our end goal needs to be the end of unsanctioned camping in the city of Portland. It's been prohibited since 1981 in the city of Portland. And that needs to be the end goal from a public policy perspective. We're a long ways from that, both because of Ninth Circuit law, Oregon law, and really humanitarian constraints around that objective. But that needs to be the end goal. So in the short term, I applaud what the mayor has, some of the steps he's taken in recent weeks and months, long overdue. The city needed to have occurred a long time ago. But getting a population that is largely suffering from mental illness and addiction away from busy streets, this is a no brain, common sense. Some of the other executive actions with respect to safe villages, the commitment to enforce in close proximity to them, that's an important concession to neighborhoods. It was a necessary step, it's one of his other executive orders here. So the other one is close proximity to schools and playgrounds and parks. These are our central gathering places in the city of Portland, where we're really exposing children to some really unpleasant realities right now. Then one last piece is that, you know, we have RVs and cars parked throughout the city. And we, those right of ways are for everyone. So we need to, we need to enforce the law there. That's not necessarily protected by the Ninth Circuit decisions, not protected by Oregon law necessarily. We need to enforce Portland law there. But the end game is we're ending unsanctioned camping in the city.
And Vadim, what about you? Do you agree with Mayor Wheeler's recent actions? And would you, are there other areas that you think should be, where unsanctioned camping should be enforced?
I do, I do. I think we need to have, once again, that transition to temporary shelters where people can go designated areas where they can get services with, let's say, the RVs. Both Vancouver and Beaverton have designated parking areas for RVs. We spoke, one of my organizations, the Public Safety Action Coalition, we spoke with the person in Beaverton that was in charge of that. And once again, they have a place where people can park, they have a place where they get services for housing. And they also have the ability to take away waste and things like that, that does not impact neighborhoods or open spaces. I would say one more thing, we need to ensure that our sidewalks are not camping areas. I've heard from too many people with disabilities, whether motorized or people who have vision disabilities that are not able to actually walk their neighborhoods. And this is particularly important around areas such as the Oregon Commission for the Blind, places where people definitely have to get to. And right now it's an ADA violation on the city. That's something that we need to ensure that does not happen. So that's a marginalized community that too often goes unheard here in Portland. And we need to address issues for people to be able to walk around, to be able to use mobilized devices in their own neighborhoods. And then any area that can cause harm to individuals, and I'm talking about embankments, I'm talking about areas where people can be harmed, where fires can start. I went over to the Overlook area and people complained that there were open fires next to neighborhoods and open public areas with trees and grasslands, and they've seen fires. They're worried about this fire season coming up and rightfully so. So we need to ensure that the fire marshal is out there. And if that is happening, that we don't have camping in places that can cause wildfires or destruction to other areas of the city.
Great, thank you. And Joanne, what is your thoughts in terms of whether the enforcement against unsanctioned camping should be expanded? And as well as Mayor Wheeler's decision so far?
So I, I don't think anybody should be sleeping on our streets. That's my bottom line. Everybody deserves a safe place to lay their head at night. Bottom line, no one is sleeping on our streets because they want to be. And if there are, that's a very, very, very tiny number of people. As I talked to the houseless camp outside my apartment complex, every time I asked, what do you need? How can I help? The first thing they asked was garbage bags. We have camps that have services where we bring shower, we bring a garbage service, we bring social service supports, and we have camps where we don't. The city abandoned our houseless community when COVID hit in March of 2020. Investors invested $4 billion in downtown and the Central East Side. Professionals got their needs met at home with Amazon and Home Depot. And workers, many, many workers lost everything. I've served on a board of human solutions for the last 12 years. And we run shelters. And I can tell you in our family shelters, people work, they work one and two jobs. They just can't afford first, last, security deposit, pet deposit and pet rent. If we had not had RLO in place at the beginning of COVID, talk about a tsunami of evictions we would have seen. I think we saved lives by having the protections in place that actually allow people to stay in their homes when we were facing a worldwide pandemic. So we need, again, I want everybody to have a safe place to lay their head. And I don't think criminalizing people who cannot afford, especially with no mental health beds, no alcohol and drug treatment, places to take people. It's not just about disappearing houseless people. It's about making sure that we are making the right investments so that people have the opportunity for long-term success. And again, no one can tell you, people throw out numbers about the, how many houses people we have. No one can tell you because what we know is that people are doubled up in apartments. There's living on people's couches, they're sleeping in their cars. And so we don't know the magnitude of the problem yet. And, and because even the aid only helped people that made $35,000. So if you made $36,000, you still owe back rent. And we will continue to see a rise in evictions between now and July because those protections are going away.
Thank you. Let's see, Vadim, if you can start off on this question, and I apologize because I can't, I no longer can keep track of it, who went first on what. I want to talk a little bit about gun violence. Portland had a record number of homicides last year, it's on track to exceed that this year. What new solutions or what, I guess initiatives would you support as, if you were elected as City Commissioner?
Okay, it's going to take a village on this one. So we definitely need to have enough police, you know, in the Mount Scott neighborhood. There were a lot of shootings and some barrels were put in there. But also the police went out there and made 60 arrests, took away guns from people that could have caused violence. Once again, it takes a village. We have, we certainly have the need for community intervention specialists. And I'm working with people like Roy Harris and other individuals that are out there, making sure that gang violence or other individuals that are prone to join gangs are actually met ahead of time. And we need to find jobs for people so their lifestyle does not entail crime or joining organized gangs. Part of that is working with the unions and making sure that people have access to internships, apprenticeships with the union, good paying jobs that can afford a living wage. Part of that is working with the business community so that there's internships with the business community where people can get jobs, summertime especially when individuals are not in school. And also working with the city, we need to have more internships with the city. I worked on Project Search where people with developmental disabilities got internships. We should expand that to other individuals in the city. Give people opportunities for a job rather than opportunities in a life of crime. And then we certainly need to have more individuals out there in response to some of the crimes that we're seeing here, including the gun violence. We see some neighborhood associations that are walking their streets. Civic life needs to do a better job in order to coordinate that like they did in the past. And then the Public Safety Support Specialist, which was one of my recommendations to Mayor Wheeler as the Commissioner of Police, where you have individuals that could walk the streets and keep an eye out, which would also decrease crime. These are unarmed, uns sworn officers, but employees of the Police Bureau. And in this last budget, about 100 of those will hopefully be hired in order to address some of these things. But there's, there's no question that where we're seeing an impact, whether that be Mount Scott or Mount Tabor, the FIT team is out there and they've taken guns off the streets. We need to have good oversight, we need to have good training, we need to make sure we have community oversight. But we also need to do what's been working and what will work in the future to address some of these high crime problems that we're having.
Thank you. Joanne, same question for you. I guess what initiatives or new programs would you support to address gun violence?
So what I've done is work with community on community solutions to violence. Mount Scott, LaLita is a great example of a community-driven effort that came together because my office listened and went out and worked with community and built the internal support within the city of Portland to try something different. We didn't know if it would work, but what we do know is that violence, gun violence was reduced by 64% in that targeted area during the time of our pilot. What we do know is that the community believes, the community knows they were listened to, that we tried something different, unique outside of the box. And we are now working on, with the help of my colleagues, if they funded in this budget, a more permanent solution. And what we heard from the community is if we had better lighting at the convenience store, if we, if we change the, the traffic pattern so that cars couldn't just turn this corner and skip through residential neighborhoods, they believe that would make a difference. That's how I have worked since I've shown up at City Hall. And I've worked with 12 police chiefs, six police commissioners, and over the last 30 some years, but 30 and more for free. And I can tell you that we are in a much better place in understanding that violence increased drastically during COVID. Domestic violence went up between 30 and 400% weekly. Every week when I asked Chief Lavelle, what are we doing to address the huge increase in domestic violence? I cannot get an answer. When the FIT team was being imagined before Sam Adams was hired, there were three questions the community wanted to know. Those three questions were, how many guns did you get off the street this week? How many cases are headed to the DA for prosecution? And what's the demographic breakdown of the individuals involved? Those were the only three questions. So once again, we've created a committee that signed a confidentiality agreement that is supposed to be a community voice, but they in fact aren't because all they are doing, the FIT team is operating like the gun violence reduction team and like the gang violence reduction team. Officers come in, they make a presentation with no data, no, no information other than their verbal thing. And we're supposed to believe that this is operating differently than all the other units that were disbanded because of their disparate outcomes.
So are you not, are you, are you not supportive of the focused intervention team?
I'm still asking those same three questions. And as far as the PS3s, so far, they've only played the role of secretaries to Portland police officers. They are not on the street, they are not visible. What we're telling the public, and I've demanded that we get an evaluation of their effectiveness. Because honestly, if the police just need secretaries, we should hire them secretaries. We should not in fact hire people and tell the public that they're somehow going to provide additional public safety benefit when in fact they're only working on behalf of what the police, the sworn officers are telling them to do. And so I've asked the mayor before we add anymore, because so far we have 14 and 12 of them are supervisors. And I said, well, why would we promote 12 of the supervisors out of 14? The answer was, well, because we have to hire more people. That's not a good reason to promote someone to a supervisor.
Thank you. Let's see, Renee, same question for you in terms of what would you do? What programs or initiatives would you support to address rising gun violence?
I had to answer that.
I put it in three buckets. So in terms of staffing at the police department, we absolutely have to have sufficient police to commensurate this commensurate with our population. Includes crucial investments and specialists, de-escalating violence, whatever we call it. We change the name of it every 12 months, 18 months, it feels like in the city. But focused intervention is a crucial piece in de-escalating violence. We also just need boots on the ground and that's to address crime in general. We need more police officers on our streets. Part of that is we need to change the rhetoric coming out of the City Hall, coming out of social media, coming out of the press with respect to our public safety officers. We made it very difficult to recruit and retain good officers. So any discussion about staffing has to include how we make it a more hospitable place to attract and retain good officers. And so I think we, right off the bat, we need to reset there. And when officers are doing things well, we need to celebrate it. It needs to be explicit, public relations that is a part of the city of Portland. When our, any worker is doing something well, we celebrate it, including our police officers. Second, you know, the acceleration in gun violence is also a product that we have more guns on our streets today. And it is partially attributable to the pandemic, general concern with social strife, lack of confidence in our public safety apparatus. You're seeing vigilantes emerge, you're seeing an accelerate, what used to be solved with a fistfight is solved with a gun on our streets. And there, there's no simple answer to that other than confidence in the system that if a crime is committed against you, that there's faith in the system that will rectify it. That's not going to solve all of your retaliatory crimes, it's going to address some of them and hopefully lead Portlanders to have faith that public safety will take care of them. They don't need to go buy an assault rifle to protect them in their homes, much less a handgun. Third general bucket, and you know, any thoughtful discussion of crime recognizes this multi-factoral, right? You don't have one driver of it and ignore any particular type of crime. So we can never let, again, allow public schools to close for a year. That was a mammoth, a public health failure that released too many very young people essentially out into the wild without a plan, across socioeconomic classes, across white, black and brown. It was horrific. And I believe it does contribute to crime. You tie that to the other outlets, positive outlets for our young people, closing sports, the arts. We need to protect those things and treat them as something that we have to protect even when things get tough. That they need to be a priority, particularly over the medium term, long term. And third, you know, economic opportunity does allow folks to find a healthy path in life. None of these things solid by themselves, but we have to commit to living jobs in the city of Portland. What is attracting employers, what's keeping them here? Right now, we're driving employers away from the city of Portland with our generally anti-business mentality. We're going to start driving some of our nonprofits out of the city as well because they don't want to employ here either because it's harder to attract talent. So explicit goal and focus on job growth and particularly living wages. And you pulling all the strings we can do to continue to attract jobs.
Great, thank you.
Directly impacts from.
Okay, thank you. I am going to start implementing a one minute timer. What I'll do is I'll put up my hand when you have five seconds left. And Joanne, this question goes for you. Portland Street Response, it has had a well-received pilot, it's expanded city or in the process of expanding citywide. But the types of calls that it goes on have been relatively prescribed. Where like one or two years from now, how will that change? What are the types of crimes that, or I shouldn't say crimes, I apologize, calls that they will be responding to?
That's a great question, Helen. Their call type will be expanding. And it was interesting, I was having this conversation with Deputy Chief Fromm recently. And we were going through the last, the various call types. And what we realized is there's a very small percentage of calls to 911 that actually are calls of criminal behavior, right? And if we get better at really targeting calls for criminal behavior to people with weapons, then we can send other responders to those other types of calls. So for example, a person down could mean a whole host of things. It could mean somebody is emebrated and they're sleeping. It could mean that they've had a heart attack or some other medical issue. It could mean they could just be exhausted and taking a nap. You don't, you don't know, right? So when a call taker gets that call today, they will call the police. Yes.
Okay, great. I do want a little bit more clarity on that. So they are, Portland Street Response, are they not responding to calls where someone's saying that there's someone down?
They are responding to calls today, but there's specific, there's specific call types, right? So the 911 operator. So the nine one one operator, when somebody calls and say, you know, there's somebody in distress. Okay, what do you see? What's going on, right? And based on the information they get, they will determine who to send. Or someone could call and ask specifically for Portland Street Response, and they would get Portland Street Response sent.
Okay, and so the, their authority does cover those kinds of calls. It just really depends on what nine one one will send them out to.
The caller says, because as you know, we train the public to make it sound as severe as possible so that they can get a quicker response. And so people may say, I think I see a weapon. In fact, when they didn't, because they want a quicker response, right? And so it's, it depends on the expertise of the nine one operator to really be able to tease out. What the appropriate response is. But again, we're, we're about to start a public education campaign. That will be really clear about when to ask for Portland Street Response, right? Because we have to retrain folks on nine one one, three one one, and then Portland Street Response is a part of the nine one one system.
Okay, great. Vadim, what is the role that you think Portland Street Response should fill in, in the coming few years?
Well, first, we need to ensure that we understand how many calls they're answering. That's the, it's still really early. So in. Eugene, the cahoots model with three vans answered fifteen, I'm sorry, twenty four thousand calls in two thousand nineteen. Cahoots so far because it's been limited to one van with, with five million dollars that they have for a while, but still one van. It was only answering four calls on Lent's. And so we need to ensure that, you know, in Eugene, they're answering eighteen percent of the nine one one calls. We, we have to hold ourselves up to at least that standard, if not more. They need to go out for mental health calls that are nonviolent. I mean, that's, that's the beginning and the end. If their person is violent. We, we can't send medics to, to answer those kind of calls and, and mental health specialists to answer those kind of calls. But short of that, I, I think it should be expanded. So when people have mental health crises, whatever that might look like. And there's not a threat of violence, that, that those calls should be expanded. We just need to make sure that they're addressing the calls around the city and as well as cahoots.
Great, thank you. And Renee, same question for you. What role do you see Portland Street Response filling in, in the coming few years?
I think as a society, we want to minimize at times that a police officer needs to interact with those struggling with addiction or mental illness. So. Directionally, we want to minimize those events. Just want to call out when we answer this question that. Any dependency on a human being to accurately predict whether something is going to be violent or not. Is at scale, we have to assume a certain percentage of those calls are going to be wrong. So you have a nine one one dispatcher interpreting the facts and the grounds explained to them by someone on the phone. Certain percentage of the time, there's going to be a miscommunication. And my wife was a social worker. She loved to interact without police, but there are many instances where you went into a situation. That you didn't think would turn violent, and it does turn violent. And you only need a few of those to really. Do some real harm to social workers and to other responders. Beyond that, we need more facts. We need a little more time, a little more runway with this program to fully make that call.
Great, thank you very much.
I just want to say Portland Street Response is doing de-escalation training for neighborhood associations and small business owners who need it all over the city. Because what we understand is that police are not always going to be there at the moment that it is needed. And we need to create community solutions.
Thank you. Let's see, Vadim, I think go first on this one.
He went first last time.
Oh, he did? I'm sorry. Okay.
It's time for me, I think.
Okay, that sounds great. Joanne, so and actually this kind of relates directly to, to something you've been involved with. The, the city auditor believes that it will be, you know, potentially five years before we see a working police oversight committee. In place. Partially, you know, the, the measure was passed in November twenty twenty. The committee was named, but it didn't even meet until December of twenty twenty one, which frankly seems to have, you know. Put them to a late start to begin with. So in light of that. In light of problems that PSEF is having, do you think that the city should seek to have a court-ordered monitor as opposed to. Leave oversight with the city itself under the DOJ settlement?
But let me say, the reason why we are out of compliance. Is because the Portland Police Bureau, in their response to the Department of Justice Civil Rights Division. As to what took place in the summer of twenty twenty in Portland. They sent a very dismissive report to the DOJ. Basically saying, we don't know why people were mad at us. We think they were just bored and sitting on the couch. No wonder the DOJ absolutely slammed down the book at the city of Portland. The fact that no city council member or the mayor, no one outside of the police bureau reviewed that information before it went to the DOJ was absolutely outrageous. Come to find out, the auditor, her information goes directly to the DOJ with no oversight from the city council. Since I've been on council, I have demanded that we, the council. Meet with the DOJ at least on a quarterly basis. We've been meeting monthly because as you know, we're out of compliance. And we need to get back into compliance. I do not believe changing. Oversight at this late stage would benefit the people or the taxpayer of Portland. Because we've already paid a small fortune to Dennis Rosenblock. And, and we need a year of being in compliance before we will finally be out of the settlement agreement. And we know the settlement agreement is just one tiny piece of what's wrong.
Okay, thank you. Renee, same question for you. Do you think that the city of Portland. Should actually seek a court-ordered monitor to help ensure compliance with the DOJ settlement, considering the number of setbacks we've, we've seen?
I don't have a strong feeling about it. I'm not inclined to do that. You can often go back and get a waiver, can ask for more time and. I do want to hearken back to what led to this push in twenty twenty. The city responded to at times very violent protests on police. I think we can no longer be making policy based in response to violent protest, I think, and to, and to flat out riots. I think we rushed this through the, the voters. And again, they approved it at a very high rate. So all of us as voters have responsibility here in, in what was rushed through poorly construed.
Six thousand uses of forces.
Right, and please, Joanne, actually Renee speaking.
I'm just so annoyed that that misinformation is out there. That is not true.
It's, it is the. Our inability to push back at times to the loudest and most violent part. Of our political discourse is a problem. And our inability for even the political class to balance these challenging issues. Is problematic. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. And Vadim, what about you? Do you think that the city should look for court-ordered monitor to help? Or to, to enforce compliance with the settlement?
Yeah, that's, that's a possible solution. New Orleans is doing that and it's working out there pretty well. But I, I serve on the citizen review committee. I've served on PSEF in the past. This is where experience matters. I worked with the Justice Department. And understand why the city is out of compliance. You know, to respect with your particular question, it's about the oversight agency. We were promised that would be up and working in eighteen months. With a fourteen million dollar budget. And yeah, now it's going to take about two to three more years. We need to ensure that that happens quicker. Eighty-two percent of the voters wanted it. Let's make it happen quicker. But on the citizen review committee, that's still active. One of the reasons it was out of compliance in that aspect is because of that transition. That the city had not outlined a, a path. Now we know it's probably going to be its own separate entity and it's going to be able to do a temporary job. But one of the things we're asking for, one of the things that I and other people went out to the city commissioner's office, including Commissioner Hartz's office, was to ask for. A lower threshold of review. Right now we have a very high threshold for overturning a police finding that they were in policy. We asked for a, a lower level of review so we could have more teeth. No one took us up on it. That agency can do a good job, the citizen review committee and IPR, until the new board comes up. But we need to escalate that board and make sure it happens quicker so that people have confidence in their police.
Great, thank you. I do really want to squeeze in one quick question. Twenty seconds, thirty seconds at most. Let's start with you. Let's see, Vadim. Is there, you know, with the Portland Clean Energy Fund, there were a number of issues that were, that have been reported on by the Oregon, New Oregon Live and others. Would you support limiting the amount of grants that PSEF can issue until it gets a number of its governing documents in better order?
Yes, so obviously the auditor report is very scathing. The original report was even more scathing. We're behind on our twenty thirty climate action goals. We're behind our, definitely behind our twenty fifty climate action goals. For the city and PSEF is supposed to help with that. And you're supposed to have metrics in place, oversight, accountability. And it's not just PSEF, it's, it's a bureau-wide. I think it's in all the bureaus. Each bureau has its own separate grant process. We need to make sure that we're held accountable. And if someone is not being held accountable, we need to fix it and so that it does happen. I think originally the proposal was to freeze things. We need to have those metrics in place and that accountability so taxpayers' money is put to good use.
Great, thank you. Joanne, can you answer the same question? Do you think that there should be some kind of a limit?
No, I don't think it should be a limit. You may remember the city's financial director did not know how much money would come into PSEF. Because this fund is supposed to benefit Black Indigenous Latinx and other communities of color. The, the billion-dollar corporations that are paying into the fund. Want us to slow down. We're building this from the ground up. And we're building it from frontline communities. This is not city money. This is not money for us to decide how to reach the city's climate goals. This money voters voted on intentionally to invest in BIPOC communities so they could. Get a head start on climate mitigation, creating green jobs. And making assets available for the folks who are hit hardest and worst to come back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Renee, same question for you. Do you think that there should be any kind of pause or limit on the grants that PSEF issues?
Absolutely. The, the program does not inspire confidence. The audit report was brutal. We've bypassed basic procurement principles when we are applying, when we're looking at these grants. And it's deeply problematic. That is public money in a sense. It comes from taxpayers' dollars. It doesn't matter if it's a big corporation or not. Emblematic of our entire approach to these types of programs. One technical piece, it is tied, just Joanne, you might take a look at this. It is tied to the city's climate goals. That's an explicit mandate currently. So, but I will say there is an area I'd love us to try and prioritize with those grants, and that is. We got to build up our tree canopy. Global warming is a reality. We're facing, we're living with it. And we, the best time to grow trees is right now.
Great. Thank you both, or thank you all. I'm so sorry that I had to kind of become time cop at the end, but I really appreciate the conversation. And if we have any more follow-ups, I will contact you individually.
Excellent. Thank you so much for the time. And when are you going to publish your endorsement?
I believe a week from this coming Sunday is what we're aiming for, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Everybody.
Thank you everyone.
Hope to see you in person.